Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the KI of the Hold for May 12th, 2025. I acknowledge that this meeting is taking place on the traditional territory of the Shanu and South First Nations. The District Government chosen is committed to reconciliation with indigenous peoples and recognize, honor, and respect the presence of indigenous peoples past, present, and future. Please be sure to have your cell phones turned off during the meeting. Before I start, I would like to make a small announcement that we lost one of our treasured residents who frequented this chamber a lot over the years. So we are saddened to share the news that Mr. Jim McPherson passed away yesterday in hospital. Jim made tremendous contributions to Michozen over the years through his tireless work, through volunteering and deep commitment in our community. His involvement spanned many groups and committees, including the Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee, the Michozen Environmental Select Committee, Agriculture Advisory Select Committee, the Michozen Community Association, Michozen Museum Society, the Michozen Garden Society, and many other parts of our community. Most recently, Jim was known for his ever-present and thoughtful commentary at council meetings and on municipal finances. His insights and dedication will greatly miss. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his wife Kathleen and to all who knew and appreciated Jim. So, committee, we have an agenda before you. Before approval, I would like to note that we will remove one aspect of the agenda, and that is under Business arising, removing item 6B. We've received some new information from the Michozen Foundation over the weekend, and so we'll put this onto possibly a further agenda in another meeting. Are there any other changes or additions?
Moved by Mayor Little, seconded by Council Schukin, all in favor.
Carrie, thank you. We have presentations this evening. On your agenda, it states that Taryn Malcolm is to present, however, in her place this evening. We have Mr. Jonathan Dyke, Senior Director of Marketing and Communications with Victoria Foundation Vital Science Program. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me, Chair and Council. Yeah, my name is Jonathan Deck, and I'm the Senior Director of Marketing and Communications for the Victoria Foundation, and thank you so much for having me today. I'd also just like to start by acknowledging with respect to the Kwongan-speaking people, the Songhe's and Squamal nations on whose traditional lines our offices are located. We are very fortunate to work across the region, including with the Michozen Foundation and other partners within the District of Michozen. So first off, I'll just start with a little bit about who the Victoria Foundation is. We've been around since 1936, and we were formed by an act of legislature through the B.C. government. The foundation is accredited by Imagine Canada and is a member of community foundations in Canada, which has over 200 local foundations from coast to coast to coast across the country. We are the second-oldest foundation in Canada and the sixth-largest. Our purpose statement says, "The Victoria Foundation seeks to create a sense of belonging that inspires philanthropy, central partnerships, and collaboration, and makes a lasting contribution to our community." And I think that's a wonderful place for us to start this presentation today. A way for us to understand sense of belonging is through data and hearing from those in the community, and those components are core to our Vital Science program. Victoria's Vital Science is an annual community checkup that measures vitality of a region, identifies concerns, supports action on issues that are critical to our quality of life. The foundation produces the report to connect philanthropy to community needs and opportunity. It's a publication program that has really turned the Victoria Foundation on its head and helped us make an impact in the community. It's also widely used in the community, including by organizations looking to apply for grants and those evaluating where there is need in the community. The program has grown over the last two decades and has certainly not stayed the same. Today, I'm talking about the 19th report that we put out. The Vital Science program includes two key data components. The first is a citizen survey, which is where my focus will be today, and the second is on gathering of secondary data from a variety of sources such as Statistics Canada, the Provinces of B.C., local sources, including the Greater Victoria Public Library. So let's talk about the 2024 report. Our theme this year was, "Can you imagine greater Victoria for your grandkids and the next generation?" And it was driven by desire to better understand what we need to do today to get the future we want. The citizen survey includes specific questions related to the theme, and I will share some of that data as we move on. In 2024, we had a record number of people respond to the survey with over 6,500 responses. That is the most in history, both answering the questions specific for that report and standard questions that are produced here over here. 1% of those responses came from Michozen. Within the data from the people that took the survey, they had some clear direction. So with that, I will talk a little bit about our regular questions and issue areas, which are staple of the program. Within the program, participants grade the community's overall wellness, 12 key issue areas, and talk about the best and most prominent issues in the region. Overall, residents in 2024 gave Greater Victoria a B. This is consistent with 2023 and down for a B+ in 2022, when we were starting to have optimism about that stage of the pandemic. Interest rates hadn't quite started rising yet, so there was more optimism in the community. A B, in our opinion, means that we are doing things well, but there is still room to grow. So now I'd like to talk about the best things about living in Greater Victoria, including the natural environment, climate, and air quality. Oh, sorry, I went one too far. Parks and walkability were four and five as well, and I think you can see that around the District of Michozen. You can see the other rankings on the screen as well. These are the items that are strengths and areas that we should continue to explore, protecting, or building on as we move forward. For context as well, when we look at the issue areas, sports and recreation received the highest grade out of B+, and it was the only issue area in 2024 to see an increase from a B to a B+. Learning, environmental sustainability, and arts and culture all received B grades. It was the second-highest ranking. There we go, sorry. I'll figure out the clicker by the end of this. The most important things, so cost of living, housing, healthcare, and homelessness were the top four. Addictions came in at number five. When we asked what the top five things are to address these issues and make Greater Victoria an even better place to live, the top one was affordable housing and more rental options. The lowest grade for an issue area out of the 12 is housing at a D-, and that's actually up from an A grade that it received two years ago. The data tells a story about how we need to move forward as a community and to create a sense of belonging for all. It will take all of us to work together. So now if we look at future generations, building off the challenges that today, as I mentioned, we asked about what we can do to improve things for future generations. So from the 6,500 people that took the survey, there was some clear direction, including a strong confidence that we can protect and enhance our natural environment. However, there's limited optimism that we can improve the cost of living. What does this mean for us? It means that we need to be examples of driving positive change. It means we need to be leaders and visionaries to find solutions to these wicked problems. It means we need to instill hope within our community. So outside of the data, I just want to talk a little bit about how we promote the survey and the report once it comes out. So we do print 17,500 copies of the report, and it's distributed throughout Greater Victoria, mailing lists, to little boxes as they go, those type of pieces. We also have an annual launch event that was held at the Convention Center this year. We had over 300 people in attendance, which was really excellent to have them come out and engage. We also have a new digital layout, trying to engage with younger audiences in a more digital form. And in the first few weeks, we had 15,000 page views of that site and a really high time on-page performance, so that was really positive. Overall, the report in 2024 has generated a very positive and constructive conversation about how to move forward. So these are the 12 issuers on the screen, and at the end of the report, we ask a question. It is very broad in scope. There's a lot of different data. And sometimes we think that one person can't make an influence or one organization can't make an influence, but we always challenge people to think, "What issue are you willing to take on? What is in your sphere of influence to be able to do something?" It's not on one person, one government, one organization to fix all these problems. I think if we work together, we can really find solutions. And lastly, I'll just talk about a few projects that we work on coming out of Vital Signs. So we do vital conversations to drill down into some of the data that are in the report, and we have other conversations as well to think about what is really interesting here and what are some areas that we would like to go on. We also have the GATS initiative, which is a core group of donors for us, which are Gen X and millennials that also really dive into the data and look at it. One of the programs that we're most proud of is Vital Youth. And so this is 12 high schools around Greater Victoria and up into the Couchin Valley who take part in this program. And they get $4,000 each, and they get to make a granting decision as to where that money goes. They use Vital Science as a tool along with UNDR, the Truth and Reconciliation Calls to Action research. And then they have a big event where they all announce where they're going to give their granting and how the experience was for them. And we find that just fascinating to see where they choose to go. So there is a mix of public and private schools, and Pearson College is one that has participated for a number of years, has been really focused on environmental organizations as they go. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Committee, do we have any questions? Counselor Schukin?
Through you, Counselor Donson. Jonathan, thank you very much for that. And yeah, I've sifted through the report many a time, and very well done. I think I was at the launch as well. I didn't participate in the survey, though. Is there a call out for when that happens, or could you register now?
Yeah, so the survey is actually open now. So 2025 survey is open as of right now. It's open until May 30th at noon. And so if you are able to share it, we would love for you to do that. My understanding is that the 1% that has completed it from Michozen is on par for what CMA data says at 1%, but the more diverse voices we hear, we would love to see that number go up and see it higher from the Michozen area. So please do take it. We have a short and a long form option. So the short form takes about five to eight minutes, and then the longer form takes about double that. But we do incentivize it to do this long form by giving you two entries into our draw for a $100 Country Grocer gift card.
Thank you.
Mayor Little?
Through the chair, thank you very much for your report and your work. It's an impressive annual report. I was wondering if you could give us some more information on the guest and initiative. You just briefly mentioned it there, and I think folks would be interested more about what the initiative's all about.
Thank you through the chair. It's an initiative through the chair just to look at philanthropy in the eyes of millennial and Gen Xers. We know that there's different trends in giving. We know that different generations have different ways that they like to connect with the community. And so one of the things that we wanted to do as an organization, looking back to about five years ago, was develop this cohort of this group and have it as a two-way conversation. So not just showing what's in the community, not just giving what we know, but also listening and trying to understand, how do they see philanthropy? How does this group of people see it going forward? And just to be transparent, I am a member of that group as well. And I think that it's a great, you know, so it's something that we do a lot of, meet the community sessions, so taking the group out to different areas. I know that they were at Soul for Hope a couple of weeks ago, which is a great organization in Victoria. Lots of groups that are involved are very engaged in environmental sustainability initiatives. We have the Green Tithe Fund that was highlighted in our Pulse magazine, which I've left a few copies with as well, who actually make collective decisions around where their grants are going to go. And so to do that, we know that, as we talked about, cost of living is high. So to get to that minimum fund amount, participants have to bring in $5,000. And then the Foundation Board matches that with $5,000 that they can get there. But we do feel like it's a very reciprocal relationship, and they also engage in things like the Vital Signs Report. We have a member from that group that sits on our Vital Signs Committee, and it's really just a way to look at philanthropy differently.
Counselor Gray?
Through the chair, thanks, Mr. Dick. That's pretty heartening, actually, to see the numbers that you've got up there. I was wondering, in terms of Victoria Foundation, do you provide any, or do any service things yourselves, or is it all grants to other organizations? And I'm thinking you're following maybe each year, or do you do multi-year grants that cover off some of the topics?
Through the chair, so we don't have any direct service. We work with service providers in the community. You know, I will say that Maryhill is a project that we've been engaged with through the Michozen Foundation and other partners, Pierce College and Peter Bay First Nations. So we're very fortunate to be able to be engaged in that way. We are a funder, and we do use our endowment to fund initiatives and do that year over year. We also have some pass-through funds and other styles that we use. One of the things that we try to do as a foundation as well, though, is be a coordinator and connector. And so that's something that we feel is very important as our role within Greater Victoria. And so an example of that is through the Food Distribution Center that's located in Squamal. And so our 2013 Vital Signs Report asked a question as to, "Do you know where your next meal is coming from?" And that really engaged us in that work. There were some great groups in the community that were already doing some of that work, and we were able to help bring them together. There was Rotaries, there was the Mustard Seed, there was others. And so if you've ever, if you ever have a chance to get to the Mustard Seed Food Distribution Center in Squamal, it's quite the remarkable center. It started out with Thrifty Food Locations delivering food that there might be one strawberry that's bad in it, and then they can't sell it. There might be something else. And now it has 8,000 to 12,000 kilograms of food that it rescues every day and gets it back into the community, gets it back into those that need it. And it's expanded so much, it now has a farm, a kitchen that's certified so that farmers can go in and take their food that they've grown and be able to make it commercially viable. So it's just such an amazing center. And so that's part of that coordinating effort that we do and look at groups who are doing that. So I hope that answers the question through the chair.
That does. My other question was, does the Victoria Foundation, you've become aware of all these issues, work with the agencies that receive grants from you? Do you do any lobbying with the governments?
Through the chair, we have engaged in certain lobbying efforts and that, depending on what the issue is. So the Food Distribution Center, again, is a great example of that, where the warehouse started as a, when the warehouse was leased out, it was a lease, and there was money that was paid towards it and that. Then in 2017, the Provinces of B.C. actually kicked in funds to be able to purchase the warehouse and have it as a permanent location. We've also been involved with other groups, other nonprofits, and that that go to the Provinces of B.C. advocate for different pieces, especially the nonprofit sector. You know, we find that the civil society or charitable sector right now is, there's a lot of challenges coming out of the pandemic. Demand is up, costs are all up, but funding is either staying stable or decreasing slightly. So it can be a real challenge for nonprofits right now, and so trying to get that voice. We work a lot with Vantage Point in that regard. On top of the Vital Signs Survey, it's never ideal to have two surveys and market at the same time, but we, just timing, it so happened. But we are actually taking a pulse as well as to how organizations in the capital region are doing economically, so we can create another Civil Society Report that will come out this fall, showing the economic and social impact of that. When we did our 2018 report, it was found that the charitable sector had a $4 billion direct impact on the economy and created 63,000 direct jobs. So that's not a small number by any means. When we looked at indirect factors, it was $7 billion. And so it'll be interesting to see today how that's playing out. Thanks very much.
Counselor Hupp, did you have any comments? Thank you very much. Your report is very thorough and a lot to take in, a lot to learn.
Thank you so much for the time today, really. I'm glad to be here. Thanks.
Okay, so now we have public participation. If there's anyone in the gallery this evening that would like to speak, please come up to the mic. You have four minutes to speak. State your name and the street in which you live. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda, the adoption of the minutes. So, committee, we have on page five, the adoption of the Committee of the Hold for March 10th, 2025. Moved by Counsel Schukin, seconded by Counsel Gray. Any comments?
I'd said one comment on page 11, the last page of the minutes. Middle of the page, it says, "There was consensus to revisit renaming of the school once the vision statement has been confirmed." And I think I was the one standout, so I think it might be there was not consensus.
Okay. Anybody else? Counsel Schukin?
I'm going to, I, yeah. Do we need to quibble over the meaning of consensus? I mean, that, for people moving and agreeing to something, I think is enough to advance the issue. So I'm going to be voting to pass the minutes as indicators.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All in favor? Post? Post by Counsel Gray. Thank you. And on to 4B, Council Standing Committee Meeting Minutes. I would like to motion that we approve all of these unless there's one that we take out for our conversation. Moved by Mayor Little, seconded by Counsel Hupp. Comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And on to number five, receipt of minutes. Page 37 for Council Advisory Committee Commission Minutes for receipt from the Peninsula Agricultural Commission. Do we want to take all of these together?
Yes.
Okay, so then it would be the Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee, Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee, Environmental Advisory Select Committee, and the Agriculture Advisory Select Committee.
Move or see?
Moved by Counsel Schukin, seconded by Counsel Hupp. Comments? Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, I just wanted to comment. It's really nice to see the Peninsula Area Agricultural Commission Minutes on here. And so with that, we'll probably see more in the future as they have meetings in the room. My desk to refer things to them. So I think that's great. Thank you.
Yes, there's a lot. I read through both listeners. Unfortunately, they're having on the same night that I have another board meeting. Otherwise, I would be there as a representative for the agriculture, which just reminds me that we need to appoint somebody else to go. So that was, it is good to see that information because that food security is one of the big key factors, as we saw on one of the slides there as well. So I'll call the question. Any other comments? Oh, hey, Counsel Gray?
Yeah, I noticed too the lack of a representative from Michozen in terms of councils. And so that would be a good idea. I was curious, do we know what happened as regards, it's written here that, on page 44 of our agenda, that the chair attended a meeting of the Michozen Agriculture Select Committee regarding violations on farmland, but got zero support. She noted how much of a challenge it must be to enforce ALR regulations when the public ceases to support the rules. Do we know what that was about?
No, I have no idea. As the chair lives in the community, perhaps it's something that we can ask her at the next Agriculture Select Committee.
It might be good because I think we've certainly at the table here expressed concern about dumping on farmland. And I'm not sure, I thought the egg committee that we had was also in favor of action on that front. So just a clarification would be helpful at some point.
Mayor Little?
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about dumping, though. It just says violations on farmland, so maybe it has something to do with the Agricultural Land Commission, which we don't have any say over. I don't know.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And Business arising, number six, a Environmental Advisory Select Committee Recommendation, March 25th. Counsel Gray, would you like to speak to this, please?
So we had two recommendations coming out of the, from MeAsk, and the first one was about spongy moth spraying. And the recommendation to council is that the committee recommend counsel, invite Dr. Jennifer Tyne and Yoko Moore to make a presentation to council on the spongy moth spraying program, and the council considered bringing this issue to AVIC and UVCN. So we received a presentation from these two individuals who've spent a lot of time working on the question of the spongy moth spraying. And they're concerned about both human health, so the effect of the spray on people, but then also the effect on insects, and particularly, we talked about butterflies, Lepidoptera. There's also concern about the spraying, if it drifts into the ocean. It's a habit for southern resident killer whales, and there's some concern about carcinogens in the sprays. So MeAsk thought that it would be worthwhile for council to hear about the concerns and figure out if we should do anything about that. The opportunity, the spray program is run by the provincial government, but when the spraying happens, we're led to understand that municipalities are asked whether we want to allow the spraying within our district. Of course, there's issues of spray moving across boundaries with the wind and that. But if people are interested, that would be the motion I'm putting on the table.
Counsel Schukin?
A question to Counsel Gray, if I could. So Dr. Tyne and Mr. Moore, what, Dr. Tyne's background or credentials?
She's a medical doctor and a mother. And I think those two things together got her interested in what was going on because of the, it was in the news. And so she's done quite a bit of work reviewing the science on it and looking at what's done in other countries and that kind of thing. And so she is a local citizen scientist. And I think you know Yoko Moore, who's been a longtime resident in Michozen, and he's a Lepidoptera enthusiast. So, I think he might be a doctor as well. In the academic world.
And would this presentation be at MeAsk or would it be in front of council?
Here at council or at Committee of the Hold. So I make the motion that the committee, that this committee, recommend counsel invite Dr. Jennifer Tyne and Yoko Moore to make a presentation to council on the spongy moth spraying program, and the council consider bringing this issue to AVIC and UVCN.
I can start?
Motion by Counsel Gray, seconded by Counsel Schukin. Any other comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you. The second issue that comes from the committee is regarding significant trees. So you'll remember, it wasn't too long ago, we were talking, a resident come forward and said that they were very concerned about the trees on a Duke Road property, that they might be lost in the event of a subdivision. And so we talked about the significant tree bylaw at that time, a significant tree policy and bylaw. As a result of that, and because our deputy corporate officer is presently working on the tree management bylaw revisions that we've asked for, it was brought to MeAsk's agenda to look at the question of this particular designation in the bylaw. And what we found was that the, there isn't any greater protection for a significant tree as compared to a protected tree. So there's a list in our bylaw of protected trees, and significant trees, they overlap. The significant tree, though, is something where a resident maybe will say, "Well, I've got a very special tree on my property," and maybe that should, you know, be labeled or listed somewhere. And that's really the function that it provides. It doesn't provide any greater protection. There is a list in the current bylaw, which is attached to your, in your package, and it's on page 79, and you'll see a list of trees there. And it's our understanding at MeAsk that these trees have not been looked at maybe since they were very first put on the list. Nobody's gone to see if they still exist, if they're still there or not. You'll see things like invasive species, English holly, a big English holly tree is on the list. So the idea was that MeAsk doesn't feel there's a need to maintain this list or to keep it up to date particularly. Significant trees are all of our trees that we have, and the big ones are all protected or beyond a certain size are all protected at the moment. We ought to protect more of them with changes to our bylaw upcoming. We ought to protect more of them with changes to our bylaw upcoming. I'll just maybe add, uh, the one tree, the trees that I think everybody would know about on the list, that do exist, and you can see them from the roadside. At the very last entry, that's the Lombard Drive, the Lombardy poplar is there. And as the committee will know, our plan is probably, I say probably, probably to, uh, cut those trees down. We haven't, um, discussed that any further beyond the idea that we have a recommendation from an arborist to do so. The question, what we do afterwards, um, and how we might, um, manage that. Uh, those special trees, um, won't be affected if they're in a bylaw or not in our new bylaw.
Can you say that one more time?
The Lombard trees, or the decision about the Lombard trees doesn't get affected whether significant trees are in the bylaw or not. Um, so I'll just move the motion that the committee recommend that significant trees be removed from the Michoacan bylaws.
And do I have a second here? Okay. Motion by Council Gray, seconded by Council Shukin. Any other comments? Mayor Little?
Uh, um, I'm a little bit reluctant to entertain this because presumably at one, one time, um, the, um, intent was that, uh, uh, significant trees would be, um, identified and protected, for instance, the Gary Oak trees at four-two-six-eight. Um, I, I also think that if we ever have a, uh, DP, uh, that development permit application where there is an identified significant tree, we could ask the, the landowner, uh, to consider that uh, significant tree since it has been deemed that way. And, and it's not, it's not done willy-nilly either. I remember last term, um, a significant tree was identified on Rick Perron's, uh, property. And actually, it's not here, it should be the last one. Um, and it was, um, it was a mighty, I think it was a Doug fir. And we did, um, all sorts of evaluations of it in terms of height and girth and, and approximate approximation of, of age. Uh, I think it is a, a, um, a worthy list to have in the chosen. Just, uh, for, um, added protection, even though you don't think it, it adds protection, I think it possibly could in certain circumstances.
Council Shukin? Council F, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I kind of hesitate to, uh, remove this as well. I'd like to see it updated and, and potentially, uh, added to. And so that it could be incorporated on our, in our tree bylaw, when, when it comes along, I think it's. I mean, maybe it, maybe it is sort of in the whole legal scheme of things, kind of meaningless, but I think it does, uh, I think it is important that our I know these special trees are recognized.
Council Shukin?
And I, I, I seconded the motion, um, with a bit of hesitation as well. Um, the main hesitation is the fact that we are going to be looking at, um, the, the tree management bylaw as a whole. And it would be interesting to consider the removal of Schedule A as part of that larger thing. Um, yeah, so I, I, I seconded, but maybe I'm thinking it's, it's maybe a bit premature to make a bee line to recommending it's removal without considering the full bylaw.
I have a question, Council Gray. Um, with these trees, if the property owner changes, how do we track? The, the tree, um, do the property owner, like, do the property owners know of the significant tree? Is it registered somewhere that they would know when they buy the property?
Um, I think this is the registration list you see here in the, in the bylaw. There's no other record that I'm aware of. So if somebody were to see the bylaw, they'd hear about it, but otherwise maybe not. I guess maybe a way to explain this is that, um, the tree bylaw's been looked at, um, and, um, I think Miasq has reviewed a number of times over the years. So I, I'm gonna say maybe three terms now, they've been waiting to revise the tree bylaw. Maybe it's short, maybe it's two terms. Um, and each time that Miasq has said we should take this significant tree out of the bylaw. So that's been the recommendation that the lawyers have now. And, and then it came up the other day because of my question or the residents' question about particular trees. And through that process, um, learned that it's a public relations exercise. So if you want to have a tree like Rick Perron is using Miasq. And he was talking about it, and, and then eventually you could put a plaque on it. Um, but it doesn't provide any more protection than what would exist already in the notion that if our new bylaw comes out the way we're anticipating, it will say you're not to cut down trees. Except for danger trees or ones in a building envelope. And that'll be it. Uh, now, whether or not council agrees that, uh, final version, or whether we want to decide something different. That's, that would be up to council, of course. But that's, um, in likelihood what you'll see when the bylaw comes forward to consider and think, is that good or bad? Um, but the notion that you don't get any greater protection with a tree, you just get a good feeling that you called it significant, and other people called it significant. Um, there's an issue of who's gonna upkeep this list? And do we have, uh, someone who'll go and review all of these trees and make sure, do they still exist? Um, and what's the circumstance of them? And then the process of adding trees from here to there. Again, not providing more legal protection or anything like that, simply, um, being able to name a tree under property. And of course, I would name probably a whack of trees on my property as being significant. They're all very special. Um, but, um, I take the point, there's an anxiety about just what it looks like. Maybe what, um, well, it'll come forward either from the legal point now in the drafting. Um, and then you can see it then, and, um, we can make a decision then. I mean, we have the secondary motion, so we can vote on the motion or, or just bring it up later, however you like. I think it's a question of whether or not you want a bylaw that's just a public relations exercise, you're actually gonna go out there and do something with, with the, uh, with the clauses or the, um, points in the, in the bylaw. And you gotta think about the workload of staff to go and see all these trees and figure them out.
Well, that was sort of where my question was going to lead to next was if, if, if the landowner present or future wanted to do something, didn't know about the tree. And our staff was to do a site visit, would they even know about the tree? I mean, does, does anybody know where to look this sort of thing up? That's. So, um, is this something that we could do at the same time as the, uh, tree cutting bylaw, or, or do we need to do it separately?
Perhaps this would be a moment to ask the advice of the deputy corporate officer in terms of, uh, her needs and talking with the lawyers.
Okay.
Through the chair. If I may ask, the question is, um, whether or not we should leave this in the bylaw for now and then consider it separately. Sorry, at the time, would it be in the bylaw?
Through, through the chair, um, we can leave it in the bylaw as, as it is now. Um, and then, um, the, the bylaw is, um, gonna come forward to committee of the whole anyway. So it can be dis- discussed there. It's just a matter of removing the schedule out of the bylaw, so it's not, it's not anything. Um, it, it won't take a lot of time. So it's, it's up to, up to the committee, but if, um, now that there's a motion on the floor, it would be good just to call the question. Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? Council Shukin?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, again, I, I put this forward, I should have said for discussion. I, I'm, I'm not gonna support the motion. The one thing I will say, and I think it's section ten of the tree management bylaw, it does have a section on significant trees, and it says no person shall cut down a significant tree except in accordance with the permit. So I mean, that, that's something that can be overcome. Then it does say, Council Gray referenced this as well, um, the clerk shall, shall issue a permit to cut down a significant tree where it's dangerous or within a building envelope. So I, I would argue that there is a level of protection in the bylaw as we have. I do take the point though, of course, that there's an administrative burden to keep up the list and to know what's current, but yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed, but I would want to do it within. Excuse me, the context of reviewing the full bylaw, which I, yeah, so, thank you.
Council F? Yeah, like it just deferred to, I'm not necessarily opposed either, but I think it'd be better to have it deferred to the, when we see the whole bylaw. Any further comments? Council Gray?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having moved the motion, I won't speak against it, um, but I'll just say that, um, the idea here was just simply efficiency to get to move things along. And that's, and I think, um, Miasq's advice won't change over the time, over the timeframe. But I look forward to, um, reviewing this later if the mission, motion fails.
Okay, so, uh, any other comments? No further comments, I'll call the question. All in favor? One in favor? Four post. We look forward to the future. Thanks. Okay, so we go on to, uh, number seven, reports, uh, Public Works and Protective Services. This is on page eighty-three. Our Active Transportation Plan.
Councilor Donaldson?
Yes.
We do have Dan Casey from Urban Systems on as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, um, we do have a motion before us, the committee of the whole recommend council endorse the Michoacan Active Transportation Network Plan. And number two, that the committee of the whole recommend, uh, one of the following identified priority active active transportation network improvements listed on page forty-one of the Active Transportation Plan. Uh, which you all have in front of you. Um, for the BC Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant application. So there's two things here. A, that there's the Village Center improvements, and B, the Chosen Road roadside improvements. Council F, can I ask you to guide us through this, please?
Uh, well, I think, are we, um, going to hear the presentation, uh, first, or?
Mr. Casey's on the line just to answer any questions that the committee may have.
Oh, okay, I see. Yeah, well, for the past year, um, the, uh, planning through Urban Systems has been underway for the Active Transportation Network Plan. That's included two sessions of public engagement and a couple of surveys. And, uh, now we're finally wrapping it up. Sort of the goal of getting this plan is so that, uh, down the road um, when councils, uh, decide to do it, it's, uh, gives us an end to apply for infrastructure grants to create improvements in active transportation in the community. Uh, so, I guess I would just move that the committee of the whole recommend council endorse the Chosen Active Transportation Network Plan. And two, that committee of the whole recommend one of the following identified priority active transportation network improvements uh, for a BC Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant application.
Okay, so Council F has, um, put a motion to the floor or to the table here. Um, Council Shukin?
I'm, I'm happy to second this, um, but I wonder. Um, do we want to decide on what the recommended project is and make that as the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it would be two motions or if we don't want to decide it. Um, perhaps we could ask deputy corporate officer, best way to move forward.
If I may, through the chair, um, two separate motions would be great. The first motion would be for approval of making a recommendation to council to approve the plan. And then the second motion, um, if there's any discussion, would be the decision on which of either A or B that the committee is wanting to recommend to council. So the, um, consultant can move forward with a grant application.
Okay. Okay, so let's work with the first one first. So Council F has made the motion for the first one. Uh, Council Shukin, a second. Any comments?
Just for clarification, so Council F has moved the first option that we endorse the Materials in Active Transportation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Council Gray?
I had a, a couple of questions for Mr. Casey.
Sure, go ahead. Mr. Casey, can you hear us?
I can, loud and clear. Thank you. Yeah.
Thanks for joining us. Uh, through the chair, I just wanted to ask if we could include in the, um, uh, the map section of page, the maps on page thirteen and fourteen. There are just two that are missing that I think are, are relevant, uh, to the, uh, people come in the future. And those two maps are the Regional Trails Management Plan from the CRD and the Pedestrian and Cycling Master Plan from the CRD.
So, um, thanks for the question, the comment there. Was the, is, was that a suggestion that those, I might have missed the beginning of that, that those were, uh, removed?
No, if we might include them in the mapping appendix.
Oh, got you. Okay.
There's a good part called the map package, and I think it's, those are two good ones to have in there to help sort through.
Yeah, good, good comment. And I guess through the chair, I think, um, the intent with the map package in the back was that, um, we, we were finding that, uh, you know, Michoacan geographically is a relatively large place, and that the map package was intended to be a larger, um, size format, so, so that we could, um, people could zoom in and, and see a little bit more in detail. Um, the two maps that you've referenced from the CRD, those are sort of, um, copy and paste out of two different regional plans. Um, I think we could sort of, uh, zoom them in and blow them up, so they're part of that map package as well. We would just want to make sure that the, uh, they come through at a good enough resolution, that they show well at a, at a larger scale. But I think it's something that could be done.
Thank you, thank you. And through the chair, I was looking at page thirty of the goals, and I was struck that, um, the first reference is to encourage more walking and cycling trips among Michoacan residents. And it seems to me that and, and that it's for more than just Michoacan residents, it's for anybody traveling through or coming to Michoacan. Um, that's important, um, from my perspective, because we have, um, a new development of more than three hundred homes on the Langford side of us, and on the Callwood side, a development of seven thousand homes. And so I'm thinking about those people traveling out here, and, um, I'll speak to it later, but that's a, that's a, that's a potentially a lot more people on our, on our, on our roads. And if we could get them off the roads, that might be a good move. And we're just pointing that out, maybe it's that we're not, it's not just people on Michoacan who use our roads, but our neighbors use them too. The other thing that I was wondering about in terms of goal was, uh, good cycling routes to travel to and get through Michoacan. Um, again, on the Langford side, we've got the Galloping Goose, on the Callwood side, not much. And then the other point I wanted to make about goals was connecting, contributing and connecting to the region and our neighbors. In the action list, we've got things like regularity coordinate with neighboring communities, but nothing in, in terms of our goal that way. So there's just a few comments. I don't know that there's a way to incorporate them at this stage, but, um, that kind of makes sense to me in terms of where we're headed. And I think the plan holds together. Otherwise, and I appreciate the work of, of Mr. Casey that everybody's put on at, at the, um, Urban Systems.
Any other comments for Mr. Casey?
Maya, no, those are, those are great, um, great points, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, say we really appreciate this, uh, all the work that's gone into this plan and, uh, and it's, you know, it's a really workable, a readable plan to move forward with, so, thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Casey, regarding the network priorities. Um, last term, the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee, uh, did walk the road, um, Rocky Point Road, looking at a, a potential roadside trail on either side of Rocky Point Road, uh, between Arden and Hanselgassen to facilitate or to encourage, um, uh, roadside walking of, of students along that road. Uh roadside walking of of students along that road. Um, there's a a deep culvert on the side of the road and and lots of uh rocky outcrops. Um, and so it, we had about fifty thousand dollars at that time because another project wasn't going through. But still for fifty thousand dollars, we weren't able to uh say that we'd be able to do that because of of the culvering. That was necessary, so I imagine that even though this is network priorities, it would depend on budget. Um, because uh some of these were were would require uh large infrastructure like on the Rocky Point Road.
Yeah, that's a great comment, I I can say, I think you're absolutely right. Um, I can say that um we reached out to the community through a. Engagement that occurred um earlier in twenty twenty-five and um. That section of Rocky Point Road um generally between uh the elementary school and and Arden Road was something that was. Well-supported um by Michoson residents. But for the purpose, a- and that's how it finds itself on this list in terms of being one of the improvement priorities. But in terms of um what we've brought forward is what we're suggesting being sort of the immediate subject to um. Immediate, like this year, uh subject for grant application. Being either Village Center or Michoson Road, our feeling is that. That for exactly the reasons you mentioned, the the improvements on Rocky Point Road are likely uh more costly. And not necessarily the best um sort of focus for this, for this first uh grant application.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great comment.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I might just follow too, um. That on page thirty-eight, that particular um issue is dealt with. And it describes um working with private landowners to facilitate access. Um, through the back of, I think, Hanselgassen School. I'm not sure if that's feasible or if that's been talked about before at council. Is that a solution for that that situation?
In my recollection, we haven't talked about it, but I do know historically. Uh, many years ago, I'm talking two decades ago at least, children would traverse through somebody's property, but I think it was um. Neighbors giving permission for that, I don't think it was an official um, an official trespass.
Yeah, just on that point, um the memory came back through P task and their comments on on the results here. Um, yeah, there's a view that there's a lot of potential there to go from the back and um allow for foot access, so I think that's something to explore. As we move along, yeah.
It it certainly would be a safer option if we could have um a buy-in with the neighbors for sure. Counselor Gray.
And then I wondered if we might soften the language on one of the recommendations, uh if we were to adopt this tonight. And that's where it's on page thirty-nine, pursue community speed limit reduction program. And I guess I'd be more interested in exploring it. I understand the ideas that um. Or what's expressed in the document is, or the way I read it, reduce speeds everywhere. And I'm not convinced that that the community would support that, and I'm not sure that we'd be representative of them if we did make that decision tonight. So there's certain areas or trouble spots where I might reduce the speed. But I'm not sure it's that that we, do we hold the view that we should reduce speeds throughout Michoson on all of our roads, I I don't. Maybe I'm misreading the document.
It it doesn't really specify, so I guess when we come across it, maybe then we would identify that with um our partnership with the R C M P. As we have been doing. Unless we want to make more fun life, Marilyn?
Yeah, I think, I think so, and uh we've done that before, Counselor F. Uh brought forward some statistics, I think it was last term. Um, and then there was a reduction in the speed limit through the core. Which I think was was um, which has been welcome, um although many people ignore it, but but I I think it's. Uh really good uh to see a reduction, especially when there's people walking on the roads and horse riders walking their horses on these roads.
Counselor Gray.
Maybe what I'm speaking to is actually page thirty-five where it says. I'm seeing, I'm reading it now a third time. Two options are to be considered, district-wide speed uh limit reductions, and the second option corridor-specific. So I guess there is room there, I'm just not that keen on a uh district-wide speed reduction. So that was my concern, I just want to be clear that if we adopt it, we're not, we're not choosing that option without further discussion.
Counselor Shukin.
Yeah, and I I have to confess him with uh Counselor Gray on this one, if only because um, you know, we don't want to be accused of. You know, I don't know, forcing unnecessary change and having that as a distraction to what what the goals of the plan are. And I guess I ask whether uh we could maybe change pursue to explore. And if, as we adopt this, I mean. I, the outcome is potentially the same if we decide we're going to, there is. There is a street and reduced speeds on that street would allow for greater safety. So I think the 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 outcome is potentially the same, but it's not as draconian world government coming to take over, so.
Counselor F.
Well, I just noticed that on the, there are two options there, and the second option says corridor-specific speed limit reduction, which kind of covers uh. Decisions on what roads, if any, want to um, want to reduce speed on.
As well, we have uh a summary of the actions, which is what we would be working from, but I do, I do take. Take point with um the comments. Do we want to leave it in there or are we satisfied that the second one softens that? Marilyn?
Yeah, I'm satisfied that the second option um clarifies that and and a great example, we've had a lot of. Uh complaints about the speeding on the Lebon Road, especially on the narrow um uh. Area where there's, there's a lot of wildlife uh going through. And um the, there really isn't enough room for two cars to go side by side uh safely there. And it it is um, it really should be reduced even further from forty. Um, even further there because we've had so many complaints about about that, so that's an example of a corridor-specific speed limit target. Thank you.
Yeah, there's several neighbors that I can think of like that, for sure. C A O, yeah, you'd like to make?
Through the chair, I just remind Counsel that. When we bring forward uh any speed reductions, it goes through a rigorous review with. Safety team, and it comes back to council for uh discussion and and any final decisions on specific areas. There's lots of time for debate on speed reductions.
Thank you for that.
Can I just like get some clarity through the chair, who would the safety team be? Thanks, through the chair, it would be um. The R C M P, fire. And C A O and uh any relevant public works that have local knowledge on the roads, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so any further discussion? Okay, so, yes, Counselor Gray.
Yeah, it is a completely different question, not so much for um Mister Casey, but looking at the agenda. So, we talked about this before, but I'm not clear now looking at the plan, and I just want to get some clarity. So P task right now is doing a parks and trails master plan. And so as regards the trails portion of that, and whether looking at management of the parks, but of the trails portion. Will they have the exact same priorities as here? Um, or are they writing a plan that's going to have different priorities? So we've got, like, I can think of Duke Road East Trail, um the Weir's Beach Trail. But but what other? Or or is these are, are these going to be our priorities for roadside trails from here on in? Or how are we, what's going to happen with the master plan, how do these two documents come together?
Counselor Shukin.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, um but the answer, part of the answer is. We're going to learn from this document, absorb it, and bring it into the plan, exactly how, I'm not totally clear. Um, but again, the focus of the Parks and Trails Master Plan is more wilderness trails. That's the focus, there there are, of course, roadside trails that we've advocated for. And uh we'll build in the learnings from from this as we can, as we can, so.
Well, and to your point, one of the um, one of the comments um are. In the literature here that I read for the accessibility for uh say in the village. That the trails for accessibility had to be a certain width so that people that were rolling would have um. Probably a wider trail than say um a wilderness trail or nature trail. Even some of the roadside trails in further away from from the core.
Um, and to that point, Counselor Donaldson, we have a subcommittee that is actually looking at the specific trails and taking a look at each of them, and there are about thirty. And one of the things that we'll be looking at is accessibility opportunities. Um, and that, that I think is something new to the committee, so that's something that we'll be able to pick up from from this.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so on this first motion, I'd like to call the question, all in favor? Carried, thank you, and the second um motion. So the second one, which Counselor F has already stated, is that the committee of the whole. Recommend one of the following identified priority active transportation network improvements for the B C active transportation infrastructure grant application. A, the village center improvements, and B, the chosen road roadside improvements. Counselor F.
Uh, I was just wondering if Mister Casey could give us a little rundown about uh how they would actually proceed with with these options? Whichever one we pick.
Yes, happy to, thank you, thank you, Counselor F, I think um. So the intent here is part of the work that um that our group has been tasked with is. Not only developing the active transportation network plan, which which you've all uh. Seen and spoken to tonight, but our, kind of our last task as part of our involvement. Is to produce a concept design for one project that is to be the subject of a grant application. And so the B C active transportation infrastructure grants um. Uh, i- is the target that we all have in mind. And uh for the last uh handful of years, that grant uh. Funding opportunity has has become open in uh the fall, it's usually uh closes, I believe, at the end of October. And so we're expecting that'll be the same again this year, there's, I guess, I suppose there's no guarantee, but that's our, that's what we anticipate. And part of the requirement, uh an important part of the requirement for that application is. A uh design drawing that helps communicate um the the intent for the um. For the infrastructure project that's being applied for. And so our ask and and um uh motion number two here relates to which project from. The A T M P, from the Active Transportation Network Plan document, we want to spend uh our time. That's sort of the last task as part of our involvement uh on this, on this initiative. Uh, developing a a concept design that'll be brought forward as part of that application. It's not necessarily saying one project is the most important or one project. Uh, you know, one project will happen, one project will never happen, it's it's not saying that. It is saying which one do we want to advance uh as part of that application presumably in the fall. And so that's um, the question came up earlier um about uh Rocky Point Road. Um, we've suggested, while your community indicated that's a high priority. Uh, we're suggesting that's quite a complicated project and something that is not a good candidate for this, for this grant application. Um, we have suggested these other two, the Village Center and the northern portion of a chosen road. As projects that um your community, your residents indicated are a high priority. And we believe um uh one of those two would make a good subject for this, for this grant application. So that's where we are tonight, is I guess we're seeking sort of um a level of support and um. Direction from council on on which of the two to pursue.
Any uh comments on which one you would prefer? Counselor F.
I think I would move that we choose uh option A, the Village Center improvements as our first project.
They moved by Counselor F to choose the number A, or letter A, and?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Marilyn. Any other comments? Counselor Gray.
Well, I'd like to hear why.
Okay.
I can think of a number of criteria, like impact, you know, a number of people who might um choose to take a vehicle instead of uh walking. Which I'm not sure happens in the Village Center particularly. I guess I'm not really clear how the Village Center is an active transportation project. So for example, if I'm parked here and I walk over to the store. Um, our destinations within the Village Center are all easily accessible by walking at the moment.
Mister Casey, could you um outline for us what sort of improvements would be for the Village Center area?
Yeah, so the intent was, and 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 for each of these projects, admittedly, um they're an idea. That has been ground truth so far, but there's another sort of level of detail involved in determining exactly sort of what that design would entail. In the Village Center, um, the thinking was that it's um sort of uh some modest improvements on the pathway that's in place on the south side of. Happy Valley Road already, um introduction of a pathway on the north side, at least for the section sort of uh in front of the um. Uh, the old schoolhouse, um, uh, the corner store, um, old elementary school, that sort of um. Eastern section at least on the north-hand side, and then addressing some of the challenges at both um intersections on either end, so the Rocky Point Road intersection and the Michoson Road intersection.
Thank you, um, Counselor Gray.
Through the chair, uh Mister Casey, we're familiar with the Vision Zero Grants because we've applied for them to get crosswalks done with um a couple of them. Is that what you would do in terms of these two intersections, is prepare Vision Zero Grants for those?
Yeah, through the chair.
Applications, rather.
Excuse me there, sorry for talking over you there. Um, you could, so what we're trying to do here is focus on. Uh, an active transportation infrastructure grant opportunity. Um, I think what you're touching on is the uh Vision Zero opportunity, which is more focused on road safety. I suspect that the two intersection improvements we're talking about. Uh, Happy Valley at Michoson, Happy Valley at um Rocky Point Road. Would actually also make for good applications to the Vision Zero opportunity, there's no certainty in any of these grants, but. But in terms of road safety objectives, um the intersection works would probably also make uh for a good application for that fund.
And Counselor Shukin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, I am uh happy to support uh Counselor F's motion. One of the things, um, of course, P task has been at work on uh exploring the option for Duke Road East um in three phases. I continue to see that that is a viable and very worthy project. But I think in this case, if we're looking at our our first kick at doing a grant under the A T P N. Process and under the umbrella that we've created here, um. Probably the best thing to do is almost the greatest good for the greatest number, and that to me says the village. And uh one of the things that I will note is, um, we have actually heard a number of concerns about safety in the village area. Um, concern about particularly of note is is the walk up from William Head Road toward the Community Hall. Crossing from the Community Hall to the store, and then also um Rocky Point and and Happy Valley as well, so if we can look at improvements there. I I think we're looking at, um, again, one of the goals that we have identified in the plan. Section five, page thirty, which is improved safety and comfort for people who choose to travel by active modes, or bike, walk at this moment, so.
Yeah, we have identified that quite a bit this term with the amount of events that we're having. The congestion congestion of combining vehicles and people in all forms of uh modes of transportation. It is very congested in this area, Counselor Gray.
Just on that point, so that, what I'm interested in here. interested in here is just trying to figure out what's our best opportunity for grants and, and development here. So I'm not, um, opposed to the idea that we can look at those intersections, but we've spent, um, seventy thousand dollars grant from grants and other sources to get a report here, and we already knew those intersections were an issue. Um, and I think we can go to Vision Zero and, or sorry, uh, Zero Vision Grant route there. Maybe I could ask Mr. Casey, is there, uh, when there's an opportunity like that to get a grant, is there, are there other opportunities for the Machosen Road, um, option? Are there any other grants available there if we don't go for the B C Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant?
Mm-hmm. Good, good question. I really like the kind of emphasis on how can we secure, uh, external funding for, for some of these items. The, um, the provincial grant is the one that has been made available annually for the last, as long as I've been doing this, and I, there's a pretty good level of certainty it's going to continue into the future. The other one that, um, has been available more recently is a national, um, fund. So, um, it's only, uh, historically had two intakes, one in, I want to say twenty twenty-two, and then another one that the intake was earlier this year. I think it was, uh, mid-February when the, um, that opportunity closed. Those grants are, 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 are nationwide, uh, so there's a large number of applicants, uh, vying for, um, that pool of funds. But the coverage is greater and the upper limit in terms of how much it will fund is greater also. Um, so there is sort of, uh, you know, a potential greater benefit in, in that grant stream. I think the downside, the real, well, the downside is, uh, we don't know if that fund will be made available again. And so we'd be waiting for an opportunity that, you know, may or may not come. So a lot less, uh, there's no certainty in the provincial stream either, but a lot less certainty in the national opportunity.
Well, there's no more questions on funding. Perhaps, as I just had a different point about, about the, um, the goals.
Councilor, do you have a comment?
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, I do agree that, um, a chosen road, uh, does need, needs something along there, particularly for cyclists. The reason I've chosen the Village Center is because, as Councilor Donaldson mentioned, mentioned the safety factor of the congestion that's just getting worse and worse on there every, every year, and the more events we have and the more people that are coming from our, outside our borders, uh, into the Village Core area, as well as, uh, the trails. There's two connectors, one come down Pear's Road and then across the Hillman Trail that leads to the intersection and people coming into the Village Core from that side. There's also the roadside trail on Rocky Point will come down there to access the Village Core from that side. And so I feel that being able to have, uh, safe access through that section, not just the intersections, but as well as that, that stretch of road where we just have the one, the one side right now part, partly done. I just think it's, uh, the important place to start, uh, with our first, uh, grant application if we choose to do that. As Councilor Gray mentioned, there are other op- options that this plan will give us, uh, some back, backbone to apply for various grants and other projects for other areas of the, of the community.
Well said. Thank you. Councilor Gray?
So to those points, I guess, for me, we have, um, well, I just drove over here from Village Center, and you could shoot a cannonball down the road. There's no pedestrians at all. Much of the day, there's no, there's very, very little traffic, there are very few people. We do have some events there, um, you know, Machosen Day, we had the, the, um, wonderful Ford Day. For events, it seems to me is a different question. We can, we can do whatever we want on those particular days, and we've managed it, I think, to be quite safe repeatedly. So big crowded days, I'm not sure the, they're really the best use of our money because we have ways of dealing, dealing with that. And as I say, uh, it gets busy down here, but I'm not sure. When I look at the, I mean, I just want to draw our attention back to page thirty that Councilor Shukin was pointing at. And we could do one thing on the list there, improve safety and comfort for people who choose to, I'm not sure, travel, but by active modes. But that particular, um, uh, project, it doesn't hit the other four goals particularly well. Whereas I think the Machosen Road one hits almost all of them. So it's a question of, for me, I'm just kind of looking at it, we, we went out for active transportation, and now we're coming back and saying, well, let's not do active transportation with the grant, let's do, um, a safety in the village where there are other grants available. And I'm kind of thinking, wow, seven thousand people coming in, like, is there an opportunity to actually do something about travel back and forth here? I'm obviously arguing against the motion. And I just, I've been trying to lay out some of the reasons why I'm concerned about, uh, the use of this, um, the consultant's time. I'm, I'm big on when I go through the report, I look at things like work transit, high school trips. Um, there are various things that it talks about doing here, a strategic approach, we're part of the regional network, uh, so people can come through Machosen and active transportation out to, from Colwood to Langford, Yisuk, all of that is part of the Machosen Road, but not so much saying, well, people could walk safe from here to the store safely, or walk from the fire department to the restaurant safely. I think they can do that today.
Well, unfortunately, I can't agree with you after what I saw going on this weekend. It was very, very busy with, uh, the farmer's market. This whole field out here was just, was packed full of parked cars and all along Peyton Way where they're not supposed to park. And then there's an event going on, and, and we don't always know when these events are going on at the Community Hall, and once again, parking on roadside trails, which is, which is becoming an issue. Trying to back out of the store is, it's not safe, uh, even during the day when it's less busy. Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Little, you had a comment, and then Councilor.
Yeah, um, I support, uh, Councilor Epp's motion. I think the point is, is if you make things safe, people will actively transport themselves within the, uh, within the community rather than taking, um, a vehicle and clogging up the systems. I think they're both worthwhile projects, absolutely. I, I think we've, we've had a lot of impact, um, input from residents that there is some unsafe, um, areas of the Village Core. And, um, and I would vote to, uh, put that as a priority and look for other grants for the Machosen Road roadside improvements. Thank you.
And, and certainly both of these are very important, as Mr. Casey has, has stated. We've heard a lot from our residents on this, uh, repeatedly through surveys, in-person engagements. Um, it's a matter of prioritizing which ones do we start with? It's a list of goals and list of, um, well, it says priorities, so, uh, we can work through those as we did with the, we'll start with the agricultural plan as well. Go ahead.
I'm not clear how the paths will change, um, people using cars versus vehicles. So what I'm aware of is people drive to the Village Center and then they walk around. And the new system would be they'd drive to the Village Center and walk around. Is it going to be an increase or decrease in people using vehicles in the Village Center as a result of this plan, that, this motion? Like, our goal is to drop, so the provincial goal is to drop, um, um, a thirty percent vehicle travel, um, and double, um, active transportation within the next five years. Would, would say fixing the trail or putting some finer gravel on the trail in front of Libby and Blaine's place really change a lot? Or, like, I'm not just totally sure what we're doing here in terms of, or how, where would the trail actually run in, through the parking lot of Machosen Store? Like, I just don't understand what we're gonna, what we're gonna see in the end here that's gonna be a lot different from what we have today.
Councilor Shukin?
Um, just a moment or so ago, um, Councilor Epp noted that, um, the Machosen Road project, you know, is, is one that, you know, could, could help in terms of act of transportation capacity, but if we're gonna do one grant, let's start with the Village Core. Um, I agree with that still. Um, the one concern I would have with investing in the Chosen Road, even if we got the grant, it is still a demand on staff time. It is likely still gonna cost us. Um, it's bound to be fairly complicated project because of the length of it as well. And before we set forward, it would be really great to be able to talk to the C R D potentially, to see if they could be involved, because as Councilor Gray points out, this is potentially in addition to the regional network. Um, the other thing I have to say about it is, I wouldn't doubt if, um, we were to get bike lanes, and it would be really great to do that, we would probably find that, um, a lot of, the, the biggest use might end up being from those who don't live in the community. And that's, that, that has a place for sure, but in terms of our first grant, again, sorry, has a place in terms of supporting the region, getting people off, out of cars, um, and supporting safe bike, biking, because I think there is an issue here in this community. But again, first project, um, I think we should go with the core. And I would, I, I think there's a phrase called previous question, which, uh, suggests we could call the question, since we've talked a fair bit about this.
Thank you.
I said one other question, uh, Councilor Epp, and that was, the, I understand the previous council was trying to get a path down the Chosen Road. What happened there?
I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
I understand when the road was being paved, the councils had decided that they wanted to see a path down the Chosen Road, a bike path down the Chosen Road?
That was a decision, uh, apparently from a staff or a, actually not a staff member, but a, a contractor at the time that was looking after the, uh, the paving contractor and, and, uh, didn't, uh, decided not to do that.
So we were going to put, uh, the, the council of the day was putting a trail down the Chosen Road?
Well, it wasn't a trail. It was going to be just an extra added bit of pavement for a path, not a bona fide bike lane or anything, which is going to be a, an extra foot or so of pavement on each side, just much like we've done on Rocky Point Road on that section.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that we've debated this thoroughly, I'd like to call the question, all in favor? And opposed? Uh, one opposed, Councilor, um, Gray? Okay. Onto, um, section seven point two, community planning, page eighty-five. Uh, there's a request for a development variance permit. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Councilor Epp, please, give us your counselor's update.
If you're still there, thanks very much, uh, Mr. Casey.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, okay, so, uh, and my counselor's update. Well, the, the biggest news finally, it's not exactly, um, a s- a secret anymore, but, uh, the province did finally officially announce, uh, their Vision Zero and Road Safety Grants for this year. And Machosen did receive eleven thousand dollars to install, uh, pedestrian activated solar crossing lights at Hans Helgason School. So we're very happy that finally that crosswalk will actually be completed after maybe a decade or so, or more. Um, anyway, other than that, I'll just keep my counselor's update pretty brief. One of the, the biggest things lately was the Machosen Fire Department's Junior Firefighters Boot Camp, which, uh, was a really neat weekend for, for six young men who really got put through their paces, uh, as junior firefighters and, uh, uh, Councilor Gray and I were there at their sort of graduation, uh, exercise where they got to burn, burn a couple of buildings down and it put out a dumpster fire and, and extricate a couple of unconscious people from, uh, from a car and, uh, the looks on their faces afterwards were really, really quite something. They were, they were so thrilled and excited with, uh, with what they'd done over the weekend. Uh, another highlight is the, the Machosen Senior Association has been working for months, uh, with, um, Pearson College and, uh, and with insurance agents and, and lawyers and so on, be, uh, to try to arrange bus trips, uh, for seniors, uh, A bus and through, uh, one of the people at Pearson College who is going to volunteer as the driver, uh, they have made an arrangement with the college to use the college bus. And so they'll be running, uh, two trips a month, uh, leaving from the school to go to the Royal Bay Shopping Center where seniors, uh, will have a couple of hours to get groceries, maybe have lunch, or get a coffee, or go to the drugstore, the pharmacy, and, uh, so anyway, it's really quite a thrilling, uh, pilot project, just to see how it works, which will to allow people to have a social outing, um, a couple of times a month. And I guess, uh, all of the Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee has talked about having a community event and the different, uh, timeframes to try to figure it out. I think the, the final consensus was that it would be in the fall, uh, probably October, that involve a kind of an open house at the school involving community groups that want to be involved, as well as the tenants of the school. And we'll involve, um, of a community talent show in the gym, so. Um, yeah, so that's basically all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gray?
If I may ask a question through the chair, Councilor Epp, there's a Mencho line painting in the public works coming on. And can we just be assured that the lines will be narrowed on Duke Road, uh, Duke Road East this year?
Uh, well, that was, um, the intent. I think I could have to refer to, it's been, uh, since there's been an, an engineer looking at the, uh, the Duke Road East Trail. I think, uh, they are doing something like that, but I will, I will, uh, refer to our C A O to answer that question. If that's okay.
Yes.
Thanks through the chair. Um, we have an engineering um, design now for the length of Duke Road for the painting of the lines, um. So the, the total design is complete. And we're just getting it costed now with the, uh, painting company. We believe the extent of it would be between five and ten thousand dollars to paint the entire stretch. And the recommendation is to do the entire stretch, not just a parcel of it, as that could cause, um, confusion and safety ramifications, so. So I haven't had a chance to get that ready to bring to council. Um, but that would be my recommendation is to paint the entire stretch based on the engineer's drawings. Um, we just received them maybe two weeks ago, a week ago. So, um, took a bit of time to get to that point. And the costing, we're getting that done right away. But based, just based on our total cost of painting the overall district, and if you just did the math for that stretch, we believe it'll be, uh, between five and ten thousand dollars. And the other aspect would be, uh, once we do the new painting regime, the current lines will have to be chiseled out and blackened out, so there's no confusion. So it just takes a bit of time. That is where we're at, and if council wishes to proceed with that, that would be spectacular.
Thank you for the update. Councilor Gray?
So maybe just for clarification, the, last year it would have been done at no cost. They would just draw the lines. And I guess, and this year there's something more that they're doing, costing money? Or, or is there something that's coming to councils that we, just maybe the question is, is our timing good that we can do it this year?
It sounds like there's a report that's gonna come to council this year. Is that correct, Council, C A O?
Yep, that's correct. It'll come as a report to council. La- last year, there would have been a cost. I'm not sure about there being no cost. Um, there's a cost to any little thing we do, so I'm not sure about that comment, but, um, the, the critical decision will be if we, if we're gonna do this, or we're gonna do the whole stretch as per the design versus just one little section of the stretch. Um, we had discussions about this with, uh, P Task and my team, and we thought that doing just a little chunk of it would be not the safest process. We should do the whole stretch. So it's clear where the lines are.
Well, through the chair, I'll look first at the report. Uh, referring to the, the last year, I thought the plan was simply to have them paint lines in a little bit further in the road, so I don't see that, we never heard there would be an additional cost. I hope that explains my comment.
Councilor Shukin?
The, yeah, I was, I was a little unclear last year about the process for the painting, but I think it's different. The, the, the process we're going through this year, informed by our knowledge of active transportation principles, uh, and more emphasis on safety than I, than maybe we had last year. And particularly after the meeting we had on July thirty-first, where we did hear from residents that there was a clear safety concern. So I, I'm looking forward to the report too. We're gonna have some deeper expertise on the movement of the lines. You, you still, especially when you're dealing with traffic, you, you need to, um, to have, to have people who know what they're doing set their teeth into it.
You still, especially when you're dealing with traffic, you, you need to have, have people who know what they're doing set their teeth into it.
I agree.
Can I just add, maybe just add to the dialogue is the line painting is part and parcel of the roadside trail planning. And so the line painting and the roadside trail planning are, that's the best words, synonymous maybe? In that one sort of is planned to support the other aspect of it. So I'm not, I'm not sure if that was clear to council or not, but that's the intent.
We look forward to the full report. Okay. So let's move on to the next part of our agenda. Report to the committee of the whole. This is from our planner. Counselor Shukin?
Thank you very much. I do recognize that our planner is in the audience tonight, as are the applicants for our first permit that we're going to hear about tonight. So this is, this subject property is four, four, three, zero Spelman Place. The property owners, the Langiels are here. Thank you very much for your patience. And I'm just going to walk through the basics. And then I'll ask Jesse and Rebecca if they have anything else to add. So very simply, this is a request for a development variance permit related to a secondary suite that would accompany a new build on a vacant lot, which is four, four, three, zero Spelman. And the specifics, the variance requested is for a setback of the secondary suite from the principal residence of sixty-two point eight meters versus the maximum in the zoning bylaw of fifteen meters. So the applicants have stated that all the other requirements will be adhered to, so building size, height, lot lines. So the rationale behind the request is to minimize land disturbance and utilize the existing flat surfaces of two rock out crops and constructing in these spots will minimize blasting, tree clearing, and the backfilling work that would be required for roads and the home locations themselves. So as, as you look on pages ninety-five and ninety-six, you'll see there are significant grading issues on this property. Again, which, which have been addressed as best as the owners can do, as I'm understanding things. The lot is, is zoned up lands. It's ten acres and so a detached suite is permitted here. And that's, those are the basics. And if I could, maybe I would ask Mr. and Mrs. Langiel to come forward if they have anything else to add or they want us, let us know.
I think you covered it pretty good. As simple as that, just there's a natural flat spots is, is what we're going for. And to keep that distance, that close distance is like impossible without massive blasting or tree removal. It's just, yeah, be difficult. So natural spots and, yeah. I don't know if it's in there, but we've, maybe we jumped the gun. I don't know how it worked, but we, we went to all our neighbors and we had them fill out that applicant, application of support. And all are for it.
I, if I could ask if there are any questions?
Sure. Yeah, I have one question. Is there any consideration of doing a secondary suite as opposed to detached? Seems how the principal dwelling is not built yet.
Sorry, say that.
Secondary suite, like within the house as opposed to detached?
No, no, because for a few reasons is we were not financially ready to build the main house. So we needed that seven hundred and fifty, whatever it is, that square footage for this, for the detached suite is what we'll do. And then for us future, it will be for our mother-in-law when we build the primary residence.
Okay, thank you. Committee, any comments, questions? Counselor Gray?
I had a question and it may be for the planner, but, but I wondered, where is the driveway? Or how does it deal with the terrain issues? The driveway goes between the two buildings, I suppose, or? Sure.
Thank you. I was going to ask.
Counselor Shukin, maybe we could do a site visit so we could all see up close and personal where that is. Counselor Gray?
I had a completely different question, which was the, I can't tell, or maybe I'm not sure about the photographs. There are some kind of special environmental concerns over rocky outcrops. We call them moss balls. And they're covered with like their own ecosystem almost. It looks like one of the, I'm not sure from the drawings or the maps, are these got plants on them or are they gravel pictures here? Or is it gravel, the flat spots or are they?
Yeah, the, so the flat spots is at the, where the carriage house will go is at, this is a natural spot, which is like just like grass, like.
Yeah. Is, is there camus and things like that growing on them?
Sorry, what?
Camus plants?
Uh, I'm not sure what those are.
Okay.
It's just like.
We may do a site visit and then we can take a peek.
Okay. You'll probably have the biologist report too, which they did a visit and they're full support.
Yes, I saw that there and I very much appreciate the note. But the biologist doesn't mention the nature of the spots and that's what I was curious about.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for a couple here? No? Mayor Little?
No, just, just your appreciation, our appreciation for trying to develop your land in an ecologically sensitive way and using the areas that are already sort of barren rather than cutting down trees. I think that's, that's really great. Thanks for that.
Yeah, that's why we love Machosen, you know, still undeveloped. So, yeah, we don't want to be the ones to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Counselor Donaldson, as you know, our normal practice is to do a site visit. I would like to continue or keep the process rolling. And so what I would like to propose is an amendment to option one, which would simply say, it would begin that staff contact the applicants to arrange a site visit for council. And that staff provide notice to the landowners within sixty meters. So the, the rest of the option is presented here. Now, as I understand it, with this, we would have this back on the table on May twenty-sixth. If there's something that we saw during the site visit that gave us pause, we can reconsider at that time. But I'd like to, I would suggest that we keep the process going. And so with that, I would move that staff contact the applicants to arrange a site visit for council. And that staff provide notice to landowners within sixty meters of the subject, subject property, informing them of the development variance permit application twenty-five oh two, its purpose and the May twenty-six, twenty-five meeting date, when the following resolution regarding the issuance of the following variance for the property at four, four, three, zero Spelman will be considered. And this is to consider varying section twenty-three ten of the Machosen Land Use Bylaw to enable a proposed detached secondary suite and a proposed principal dwelling to be constructed with a separation distance of sixty-two point eight meters rather than a maximum of fifteen meters as shown on the site survey plan dated February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Moved by Counselor Shukin, second by Mayor Little. Any comments? Counselor Gray?
Yes, can I ask? Maybe, I'm not sure, Mayor Little, I think you've mentioned before carriage houses. Are carriage houses permitted generally in Machosen? And what is a carriage house? It's referenced here in the documents.
Yeah, if I could refer this to our planner, I think that would be better for a good definition. Thank you.
Through the chair, in, in the district's land use by law, we, we don't use the term carriage house. It's, a carriage house is typically a suite above a garage. In the document, was that something that the applicants document, the reference?
It's on page ninety-one and it's the middle of the page. And it's the letter written by the environmental consultant. I'm just not sure what it means.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, the, the consultant was making, meaning reference to the detached secondary suite.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so just to follow up, so the plan here is not a carriage house so much as a detached suite?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments before I call the question? See you none. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Counselor Shukin, next one?
Okay.
Page ninety-nine?
Great. So we next have a request for a development permit for five, four, six Taylor Road. And Mr. Duncan? Okay, okay, great. So I'm going to, I'll go through just like I did before. If there's anything else to add, yeah, okay, great. Okay, so as you can see from the report, this is to authorize construction of a new home with a secondary suite to replace a home that burned down last year. So it will involve the location of four trees. This is, most importantly, this is located in the shoreline slopes development permit area and requires a development permit as approved by council. The land is also within the agriculture zone per our land use by law. So on page one hundred, you'll find the requirements of both the zoning and the shoreline slopes D P A. Our planner, Ms. Johnson, has indicated that the development meets the zoning requirements. And she further states, and I'll quote this, "All proposed construction, regrading, excavation, tree removal and rainwater management systems will be located outside of the sixty meter setback from the natural shoreline area." And as in, it is essentially consistent with the shoreline D P A requirements. And then as we've seen in the report, that the setbacks from the water courses also exceed thirty, the thirty meter streamside protection and enhancement area by at least ten, ten meters. So with that, Mr. Loco? Okay. Is, is there anything I missed or do you want to make any further comments to this? Could you, could you, sorry, I've got to come to, thank you.
But I think the reports are pretty clear. I mean, the house, the, the house burned down, of course. It meets the zoning requirements. It's, it's not within the sixty meters of the shore. It doesn't have any, I did read through the shoreline strokes, shoreline slope development permit guidelines. They did talk about rocky outcrops and that kind of thing. This house doesn't have any of that. It's a, it's a gentle grade all the way down to the ocean. So I, I think it's pretty straightforward. I know that the civil engineer, the geotech have commented and said that it's, that it falls within all of the necessary guidelines.
Great. And our planner would seem to agree with that as well. So, but if there's any questions, I, I know I can answer any if you like.
I, I have one question. In the report, it says that it'd be using the existing foundation from the previous house. And I appreciate that, especially that it's on A L R land. It's very arable through there. Beautiful piece of property. The plans for the house look like they're larger. So will it be an expansion of the foundation as well?
They actually were initially going to remove the foundation. And I pointed out the fact that it would just make a lot of sense using for the garage for the house.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Committee, to, to me, it seems like the proposal and all the reports are very thorough in addressing the, the D P A requirements. In terms of being consistent, again, with how we've issued permits, I would also suggest a site visit to this property as well. If folks are agreeable, I might, we have some options before us. I would, I, I'm thinking that we might move option one. But I would also like to maybe break them up in terms of motions and, and maybe make one separately for a site visit and then also then recommend option two. So with that, I would move that staff arrange with the property owners to arrange a time for a site visit to, what is it? Sorry, five, four, six Taylor. So.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Shukin, second by Mayor Little. Any comments? See you none. Call the question. All in favor? Carried? Next.
Great. Okay. And again, we will do a site visit and this will be back before us. I think it is in the May meeting. And with that, I would recommend, sorry, move that the committee recommended council to issue development permit twenty-five oh one to permit construction of a principal dwelling with secondary suite at five, four, six Taylor Road. The description is there, including the removal and relocation of four maple trees in accordance with the following conditions. I'm going to read them. That the proposed principal dwelling, as is located per the attached site plan dated March tenth, twenty twenty-five. That the recommendations in the geotechnical report from Coast Geotechnical dated March seventh, twenty twenty-five and in the addendum report dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five be followed and that the geotechnical field reviews are required at the time of building permit to confirm the recommendations are followed. And that's per Schedule B. That the driveway remains gravelled. That at the time of building permit, the rainwater management system must be designed by qualified professional in accordance with Machosen Bylaw four, six, seven. And finally, that the rainwater management system location after design be confirmed by the geotechnical engineer to be at least sixty meters from the top of the bank of the foreshore slope and the up slope of well-established, upslope of well-established vegetation. So.
Okay, moved, second by Counselor Epp. Comments? See you none. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Counselor Donaldson, I'd just like to thank again our planner for, for making a nice, crisp and concise report and making the very clear response. So thank you.
Thank you. And your counselor's update, Counselor Shukin?
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so committee. First on my counselor's update is the invasive policy. And as you see in my report, this goes back to March third, when you tasked me with developing a draft policy on invasives on district land. And, and also that, an important element of this is that it be circulated for comment to other stakeholders in the, in the district. So here's a first draft. I wanted to just, in some ways, get this in the system, get your initial comments and also, and from that point, move it to P Task, to M E S, to the I committee if you're open to that. And also important groups like Billston Watershed and M I S C as well. I've mentioned in my, sort of my, my opening comments, I, I was working on some considerations. And while, while staff play a very important role in the removal or the management of invasives, particularly blackberries and in terms of keeping trails open, so much of the invasive work is done by volunteers. And so I wanted to make sure that the policy reflects the role that they play. So the other thing too, that I tried to build in the policy was just the realities that we have. We have a very small but very dedicated public works team. They aren't going to be very stretched in terms of doing anything above and beyond what they already do now in terms of invasives. And with that, we, some of the more elaborate processes that are out there in terms of invasives are probably just not going to work in Machosen with district staff. We might actually find that there's a, a, a group that comes together and is able to track and document efforts. But in terms of staff doing it, that's going to be really tough. And I, like, for example, one of the, the elements of the sandwich policy, they talk about a formal system will be undertaken to monitor populations of pests and beneficial organisms, pest damage and environmental conditions. I mean, that's going to be really tough for us to do. Okay. Key points to the policy, mechanical and manual means of invasive treatment, or sorry, invasive management, that's where we begin and ideally where we end as well. I've recommended that chemical treatment be used under limited circumstances, which are outlined in Section Six. And that we continue to get expertise and input from CRISP and CRD staff, and also again, opening the door for more volunteer action. So council, I, what I'd like to do is get any initial comments you have, and then I'll begin to move this around for further input to the other groups.
Comments, committee? Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I want to commend you, it's an incredible amount of work. Also, I was very pleased that you had a section on the role for the volunteers and how they were going to coordinate with the district, and that is through the CAO. One of the questions that I had, and I didn't look this up, but is it in the sandwich policy, do they specifically name specific pesticides that are banned? Or, or, or do they, they say this is encouraged or, or not?
I'm going to embarrass myself.
Yes, they do.
Okay, they do, yeah, I'm sorry, I've done a lot of reading, okay. Yeah, and, and they do, for sure, and one of the things that I, okay, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we should also, Roundup, for instance, comes to mind. That might be something that we would, we would suggest providing in, in Michozen. But I would go by Sanich's policy, they've, they've spent a lot of money with their consultants, so I would use that as a guide.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yes, Counselor Gray.
Through the chair, Mayor Little, was that permitting glyphosate? I didn't quite catch what you said.
Prohibiting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I suspect the community groups might ask the same thing, and I, I actually wanted to avoid that in a way, simply because, again, very open to rethinking it. But I, I sense that the amount of herbicide that is actually used in the district is pretty small and very specific. Again, what I think we do is we have, what is it, Japanese knotweed? Where are we at here? There's, there's very few species that we actively use chemical on. And again, that may change in years, so I didn't want to get into a long, long list. To me, it's, I, I, one of the policies ironically talks about an integrated, you know, pest management process, but most of that document is dedicated to how they use herbicide. And, and again, in terms of this policy, it's, it's more directed at manual stuff. But, but thank you for the comment, I might go back and have a look at how that can be done.
I'm, I'm open either way, I was just wondering why it wasn't in there. But I would be open to suggestions, I can be swayed either way. But anyways, thank you for taking the initiative, this was an awful lot of work and, and it's noted, thank you.
Counselor Epp? Hi, just also thanks a lot, that was a huge amount of work, so really appreciate all the effort that you put into putting this together.
Great, I will note, I didn't use any AI to do this. And sorry for my, for going blank, I did read all of the material that people sent me. I want to thank Alison Laduke, Rick Perron, Counselor Gray was providing a bunch of material as well. Somebody else as well, oh, of course, MISC has provided a lot of material. So again, all of those people in those groups are going to get a shot, a second shot at this.
So what are you looking for? You're looking for a motion to adopt this or, or to circulate this, to give it a nod and to have it circulated to P-Task, MEASK, and the agricultural committee?
Yeah, I don't even know if I need a motion, other than.
There was a motion here.
Is there one? Okay, sorry. Where is it?
That the committee as a whole provide input on the draft invasive species, calls prior to consultation with advisory select committees and other stakeholders.
Okay. I don't know if that's, yeah, I, I don't know if we need a motion on that, I mean, that's what I was asking you to do, and I think.
Do you want to amend it then to go just straight to the advisory committees?
Sure, what, what I, I could move that the committee, the committee directs Counselor Shukin to provide this policy to MEASK, P-Task, AI Committee, and other stakeholders. I'll second that.
So this is. Sorry, through the chair, I was just going to say that the committee refer the policy.
Okay, okay.
To the advisory committees?
Yes, sounds good, okay, great, okay, well, thank you, I will.
So, so motion by Counselor Shukin, and did we have a second?
Yes, I seconded that.
Any, any further comments?
I just, through the deputy corporate officer, would this be the committee, the whole recommends to council? That this be referred to the advisory committees?
Yes, now that it's a motion, yeah, it will go to council. So committee of the whole to council, council.
Yeah, so, one of the things that maybe I can ask, or DCO, I'd, I'd like to skip that step because I'd actually like to get this on the agenda of P-Task tomorrow. And I, I seem technically if I have to wait for council to pass that agenda, I've got to wait to do anything until council approves it. So.
So what is the, what is the appropriate governance path?
So the, the recommend, or the actionable item that was in the agenda was just guidance to the committee. So it wasn't an actual motion, it was just providing guidance to the, to the committee from Counselor Shukin's coun, counselor's update.
So through you, to Ms. Hanson, so technically, could we just, well, I could withdraw the motion and we could just, I could kind of do whatever I wanted to do?
Yes, I believe that the initial action from the, from council about a month ago was to direct Counselor Shukin to draft a policy, bring it forward to a committee of the whole, and to other, to P-Task, MEASK, AG, and other stakeholders.
Counselor Gray?
Yeah, we didn't really go around the table in terms of input, but I'm happy to, to get into the committees and we can provide you input through back from MEASK. And I think some of my questions really relate to how would this actually work? And, you know, what's the role of CRISP or the council representative on CRISP in this new world? And a variety of things, like just the language where we say, for example, and it's just more like editing than anything else, but judging from what we heard a minute ago, mechanical use would be prioritized. But different than other things I've seen, this goes on to say that we will use pesticides in certain circumstances. Whereas more typical, I think, is that we use the mechanical method once, twice, repeated times, and then if you're in trouble, then you turn to the herbicide. Not that you look at it and say, well, let's put herbicide on it. So it's that kind of language change that I might advocate for. But I'll, I'll bring it to MEASK and we'll get back to you. Thank you, thanks for the work. I guess my, my key thing is I want to see, I don't want to see an unintended consequence of more uses of pesticides in the district as a result of the policy.
So.
The motion, if I could, and with Counselor Gray's report, something's under, yeah, consented her. Okay, and thank you very much, just have one more, the Parks and Trails Master Plan process. We held our open house on April fifth, and thank you for all for attending. And I think we had fifteen comment forums that, and, and also comments throughout the day as well. Just, again, I've noted a bunch of comments that we've, we've had, concerns about trail impact or impacts from bikes, questions about equestrian use on trails. Both four, very determined, please continue to allow horses. And it was very interesting, I think I knew this, but so many of our trails were the inspiration of the equestrian community. And so it was interesting to be reminded of that. And along the way, there were also some concerns about are, do all of the trails need to be built to equestrian standards? So I think the answer to that is no, there were some questions about where that is in the documentation on that, so something to address. Again, just the importance of conservation activities and accessibility concerns. There was one great comment about the importance of park benches, not park benches, trail benches for seniors who are walking actively but also need a break when they're traveling, so that was a good one. Next steps, we are continuing to accept inputs, so please provide that at the regular meetings. The next one is May twentieth, by email or just even, even word of mouth as well, so. And again, as I mentioned, there is a group of people who are looking at specifically each of the parks. We, the plan is to actually do information sheets on each parks and trails with management considerations and also accessibility considerations, so we're going to try and get as bright members as we can, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Gray?
My question to amplify, my, with that, that will include the bufferland, I expect, I think that's where we started with a parks management plan.
Yeah.
We need to use a bufferland and then, and then Counselor Epp suggested we do all the parks, and here we are.
That's true, yeah. I very much want to include the bufferland as a park, as a conservation area, as an ecological reserve, something like that, so, yeah.
Thank you for, for your reports.
Oh, one more thing?
Yes, okay.
I, I thanked Kathy Atherton for her work on shiny geranium in Hundred Acre Wood, Michozen Wilderness Park. I just had a report from her yesterday, actually, sorry, this morning, that I think it was on Mother's Day, she marshaled her two sons to do some family bonding, and together they picked up the identified patch, so again, another thanks to Kathy for, for doing that, so.
Great, thank you. Okay, on to page one forty-nine, environment and natural areas, counselor's update.
Yep, I had just two things, one was to mention something that occurred at a council meeting, and that was that Michael Lowry from the West Coast Marine Response Corporation came and addressed council on May fifth. And as a result of that, he was talking about ocean fuel spill, emergency preparedness and response. And so MEASK is going to follow up with him about what they call the geographic response strategy locations. We've provided some input, and we'll get together with them and hear more about that. And I think that'll be likely with our Shanu neighbors. And then, Fire Chief Dunlop is putting together an outline of the district's response responsibilities for various components of spill incident, and that will come to us at the table later. And the second, yes?
Through the chair, when we were discussing with Michael Lowry, you had, you had mentioned that you thought that we had written to the province only. But actually, on July eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, we did write to the Minister of Transport Canada requesting, and, and we stated in there our recent correspondence with Trans Mountain regarding our concerns and about their research into the fate of the bitumen. And our chief concern was for the province and the federal government to understand that any oil spill cleanup will be impossible to achieve along the tanker routes in the Strait of Wadis Tuka for much of the year due to winds, waves, and currents, regardless of the behavior of bitumen in the controlled laboratory research. So we did write that letter to, to the feds as well.
Fantastic, and thank you for correcting the record. That's great news, did we get a response?
Yes, we did get response, but not the response that we wanted.
Well, that's important because I think where we were, where we left it, it's the federal government who makes the decision, Transport Canada, and so that was the concern there, but that's terrific. And I'll convey that onto Michael Lowry as well when we meet. So the second agenda item that I had in terms of report was just looking at the climate action plan and what we've worked on. And it's in your agenda package, and you can see the red is wording from before and blue is sort of updated pieces to it. And I had sent out an email to all of council, and I picked up a few points that people had to, to put in here and have added them in. And we've done a lot of different things, followed through with, and there's some questions here still to work on. And I just wanted to provide the report back, and various members of council and the mayor have been involved in these different endeavors. One thing that occurs to me at this point is that the idea, and it really came at the very beginning of the entire process, was that the idea of keeping Michozen undeveloped, that's to say, maintaining the biodiversity here in the agricultural land, is really a central part of our action plan. And perhaps, I'll argue, the most important part. We're not going to make a huge difference with our small population of reducing emissions, things like that, considering the global situation. But we can act to keep the Michozen undeveloped. And, and that's, you know, part of the work that MEASK is now involved in, biodiversity and natural assets. So we'll focus on that probably now, and then the staff has started, or we've given direction at any rate, to begin working on giving us some advice about right care and air protection, the other big thing that we could, that we could do in the environment. The tree management by law you heard is, is coming or has been worked on. And, and there's some other points to note in the document here, but I don't, won't run over them right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we move on to finance, counselor's update. My report's quite long, so I'm not going to read it all. I just will highlight just a couple of things. Myself and one of the representatives that is on the agricultural advisory committee also is a member of the Michozen Grown Society Community Garden Group. We went out to a roundtable at Woodside Farm, which is out just past Suk, with Minister Lannapop and MLA Dana La Junas, I think. And there was probably two dozen farmers in the room, well, there was a handful of politicians as well. In two hours, we didn't, we, we only touched on things, but it was a very exciting group of people that share a lot of the same concerns we do here in Michozen and the same as what packed us out, out on the peninsula, the farmers in the sanitation areas. So the, the one disappointment was when I asked Minister Popem about the, the ability to get grants now that we have an agricultural plan, because this is what we were led to believe, that there will be no grants this year. So that was very disappointing, possibly next year. So, actually, she said yes, but everything I hear in the news now, I can only say possible because I really don't know where we're at with, with, with that. However, the agricultural committee is going to start working on some of the action items. Farmers are super busy right now putting in their fields, they have been for the last couple of months, but now they're just, they're, they're full out, it's sunup to sundown, they're, they're very, very busy. The farmer's market was well-attended this weekend, we really do need to take the ropes down now, so. For people, because everybody coming in and out of this one driveway was, especially with that very precarious boulder sitting there, it was, people were being careful to be safe, thankfully. But going in one way and coming out the other would, would be very helpful. So I, I think we're good now, no more, no more rains. Pickleball courts, in addition to what's in my report here, there's a little bit of an update. We had a very long board meeting last Thursday. The pickleball, the report we got was that the manager of operations reported that the asphalt has been poured and painting will begin once the off-gassing from a period, which is about two weeks from the asphalt. The post will be, will divide the six courts and they'll be installed. The asphalt surface was. Uh the asphalt surface was increased slightly to accommodate the installation of benches at a future date. So we're expecting still the end of May, but uh certainly we'll have an opening come June, so for all the pickleballers that uh will now want to get more outdoors, um that'll be coming up for the summer, so that's great. Um what else do we have? Uh I have been away a couple of times this month, uh this past month, as you say, uh AVIC took a lot of preparation with the different um resolutions we had. We had the fire uh fireworks ban, which failed, but there's uh great in uh energy in the local area anyways with other councillors, and I know the mayor and I are keen to keep going with that at UBCM. We'll see what happens through the summer. Um the 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 goose uh resolution, I didn't have to defend it. They endorsed it in a block, so I will defend that at UBCM this this fall. Uh UBCM isn't Victorian, so that'll be great for us all that are living here. And then the um Sanich uh actually put a resolution together for feral rabbits. The one thing they left out was uh agriculture, so we're going to work together on agriculture, because I did say the Machosen crops are being eaten up, so. Um that's going up to UBCM, and it was not contested at all, so that was uh well supported. Uh so so that was a full weekend on one weekend in in April, and then two weeks later, I travelled up to Alert Bay for the to chair the uh AGM for the Island Links library board, which I'm the chair of. Um and that was really interesting. Uh the libraries that are involved with that is, there's two of us from the Great Victoria pub, Larry Berry, myself as a trustee and the CEO, as well as um a librarian from Tendrill Island, Salt Spring, Powell River, and of course, Alert Bay. The great thing about going and seeing these little libraries, I I always appreciate it. I feel it's a real privilege. Um because they're small communities as well, but they're doing these great things. There's only about eight hundred people in in Alert Bay. Um and each one offers something different. Alert Bay has this little library combined with their museum. So it was kind of unique in that regard. And um and and they're always just so excited every time they they're we're online. They're all, each of them are reporting different things to us. So it's just great to see how everything is managed um with the the minimal resources and people that they do have. We were um given a a special uh invite to go into the cultural centre, which was closed. And we had an amazing tour from a young uh First Nations fellow, uh born and raised, um generations on on in Alert Bay area. Cormoran Island is is where Alert Bay is. And uh I think he's only about twenty years old, but he was speaking his language. He's going, him and his mother are learning uh their language uh at Vancouver Island University, both places. Uh there's two places. Um not sure the other one, I think it's S F U, but I'm not certain. Um and he was phenomenal in in explaining the hierarchy, the um each house is a clan, and there's just so much information. I came away from from Alert Bay with not just so much information, but just um pride of of their uh culture. It it was fascinating. If you ever get to go up, there's a beautiful spot. Uh Port McNeil's a forty-five minute um uh ferry ride over, and it's just a little town. They've had an economic um study done for their sustainability of economic planning. They were a real boomtown in in the mid seventies, lots of fishing and stuff. And then I'm not sure all of what has happened, but they're going to resurrect the whole waterfront. And you can see, you can see the culture just in the waterfront. You can see where the colonialism, just in the in the walkway. And then you can see uh the First Nations um habitat and uh business that was there and stuff, and some of the buildings are falling apart, but you know, the pylons are still there, so I'm uh really interested in watching how they progress over the next few years. It'll be quite exciting. So so that was a real highlight. Really happy to be back in Victoria, but as with the other farmers, I'm I'm just just as busy too, so. Um that's all I have for now. I'll have more to report on from West Shore Park in uh our next meeting um next month. So with that, that uh ends our um meeting, so I'd like to call furniture, please. Um moved by councillor Shookin, um seconded by Mayor Little. Any further comments?
Are there any questions from the audience?
No, not at committee at all. Okay, uh call the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody.